Today's eight, Wednesday, April 6th, 2016. It's 10:02. Call the meeting of the Monongate County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. As we rise, I'd just like to take a moment. My Aunt Mary B. A. For Callan passed away on Saturday. And I know where she's now. She was a tremendous lady. I would very much appreciate if you'd keep her family, and particularly my uncle Stephen Callan, and my cousins in your prayers. Everyone rise for a moment of silent meditation. Pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renetta.
We have 14 exonerations today for 3,005,3186. Fiduciary matters or fiduciary orders of April the 6th, 2016. Vouchers, General County, 222,185. Cole Severance, 25,000. Magistrate Court, 25920, 911, 4,007,3463. Camp Muffley, 19682. Mason Dixon Park, 11304. Teane Court, 11,33862. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 7,65082, 911, 29665. Camp Muffley, 1,0018997. Mason Dixon Park, $33.25 for a total of 272,998. We have two new employees for you today, and then position vacancies for boards and authorities. We have Development Authority, Historic Landmarks Commission, Planning Commission, Chief View PSD, and River Road PSD.
Move for approval. Second?
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. No new employees?
Yes.
One?
Two.
Please come forward.
Break to us one as well.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We are here today to introduce Winston Walcott, one of your left, as a part-time process transport officer. Winston comes to us from a good family. Actually, he and Levi Dawson are related. And Vic Prost, who's the chief of police in Star City, is Winston's uncle. Sir.
Do we want to hold that against him?
I told Vic I wouldn't hold that against Winston. Personal feelings aside. He seems like a very nice young man. But he's met all the requirements and obligations to be hired, and we would like to hire him at $10.88 per hour, part-time, process transport. By virtue of being process or part-time, not eligible for benefits, and he would have a six-month probationary period. And that would complete our vacancies that we had in process transport.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard. I don't think we're related. We might. Because I'm related to everybody.
He's related.
We might be. We might be, though. The second person is Zach Stolt. And Zach, we want to hire as a full-time home confinement officer, finally, after we've gone through the process for a while. We finally found somebody that was suitable for the position and big enough to handle them. So we want to start Zach at $2,154.29 a month. And again, it would be a full-time position, so he would be eligible for full benefits, and he would also have a six-month probationary period.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard. I don't think we're related, either. I'll tell you, he does have a relative in the building.
Uh-uh.
In the building. You have any relatives in Preston County?
No.
Okay, then I'm probably not. One that's cooler is Zach's aunt. Oh, very good. Well, we're really glad to have you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We've had that vacancy for quite some time, needed to be filled.
Yeah, it needed to be filled for a while.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have another introduction?
Yes.
Hi, Rachel Mitchell, superintendent at Camp Muffley Park. Request approval for new hire for Brian Young, part-time seasonal employment for the general maintenance position, salary of $950 per hour.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. And I first want to thank you for the situation that we were able to resolve and bring this to our attention. And I want to personally thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for cooperation and your work.
It worked out. It worked out.
I agree.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
I have one more employee. It's a part-time employee for Mon County Youth Services Center, and I talked to the director this morning. The young lady that they have hired is a college student, and she works midnight shift, and she's in class during our commission meeting. So I told her that I would present the letter to you today for your approval if, and I instructed MJ that if the young lady was down here during work session time, that she could stop by and meet you all.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, thank you. Yeah, those part-time employees work on an on-call basis, and it's usually always at night. So when she, whenever she can stop by, if she can't stop by today, another day she can stop by. So we, I like to meet all our employees. Okay. You have any announcements for any position vacancies for boards and authorities?
Other than what I stated before, no.
Okay. All right. Now we have opportunity for comments from the public. I'll open, I'll open this session. We have any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Hearing none. I'll close the session. Comments from the public? Colleen Coon, Grants.
Hi. I currently don't have anything for you today.
Oh, good. My wrist was all stuck.
I know. For weeks, I was making you write your name.
Thank you, Colleen. We're kind of early on petition for removal. Got about five more minutes to wait for that. Correspondents? We have any correspondents?
No.
Okay. Unfinished business. To consider the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways Agreement, Maple Drive, County Route 61 over 5, TIF project, Monning County Development District number 3. This agreement that we tabled to this week, I've read over. It's a, it's a three-way agreement between the DOH, the Mon General Hospital, and the county commission. It, it is sort of establishing the relationship and how that Maple Drive will be built and constructed. Mon General Hospital obligations, the DOH obligations, and the, our obligations as a commission is primarily to ensure that our payments, any TIF payments are reimbursed in accordance with the project plan we approved last December, and to oversee and make sure those are completed. The, the agreement in, in its overall content, there was nothing, nothing really incorrect about it. However, the provisions that dealt about right-of-way and right-of-way issues and utility easements, which was assigning the DOH, the Department of Highways responsibilities to the hospital, and the hospital's responsibility to see that that was done, was led, I didn't think it was totally clear enough that the, that anything done in terms of those two relationships, in terms of what they needed to do to get right-of-ways and all, that it was clear that though those fund, anything that would involve eminent domain in any way, would be, have to be done by either the division's separate money or Mon General's separate money. Because TIFs are not, are not allowed to be used for eminent domain. And although it doesn't change the body of the agreement, it does point specifically, so a layman or anyone that reads this can understand that no TIF funds will any way be used for an eminent domain process. So the, we're waiting on the DOH's approval on the sentence that we, we inserted. Do you have that sentence?
Yeah.
The body of the agreement, and then the, I don't, it won't change anything, so I don't see, it's just really a statement of the law, so I don't see it being a problem. So what I'd like to do, I'll have you read it in just a second. What I'd like to do, if you all find it acceptable, so we can move this project along, is to have a motion to approve the agreement as to form, authorize me to sign it once the amendment is placed as read. Could you read that?
Sure. Notwithstanding any other term or provision of this agreement, the parties here to understand and agree that neither tax increment revenues of the TIF district nor proceeds of the TIF bonds may be used to acquire property rights in connection with the project through the use of eminent domain proceedings.
That's where we're at.
What's your thoughts? Move for approval. Second?
Okay, I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. That's why I read those things. Okay. Okay, well, it's time now, 10:15. Petition for the removal of the personal representative executor from the estate of Linda Susan Cunningham. Who's here on that?
Rebecca Jones.
Okay. And what's your address for the record?
My address is 328 Mount Mirror Village, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26508.
Okay. And you're, you're the petitioner in this action?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else here on the Cunningham estate? Okay. We have, why don't you come on up and sit at the table, since you're the only one here? And don't worry, we don't bite. You just, you had filed a petition, and we have a recommendation from the fiduciary commissioner. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read this, if that's all right with you, on your behalf, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I'm just gonna read the, the grounds for removal that you cited. In paragraph 6, says, "On March 1, 2016, a motion for hearing to remove the personal representative was filed by Rebecca C. Jones, one of the heirs of this estate. The stated reasons for removal are as follows. The personal representative has been out of contact with other heirs for six-plus months. Bills of the decedent have not been paid. Personal representative allegedly used estate funds for her personal benefit. The personal representative allegedly sold personal property to the decedent and kept the, the proceeds for her personal use." Now, you had a hearing before, on April 6th, before the fiduciary commissioner, no, that was, you had a hearing before the fiduciary commissioner, is that correct?
No, it's.
Just filed.
Yeah.
On March 1st, they had a hearing.
Yeah.
In front of Lynn Crane.
Okay. That was the fiduciary.
Yes.
That was the fiduciary hearing on March 1st. That's correct. Jacob Cunningham, was he there at the time? Was he present, or were you the only one present?
I was the only one present.
And, let's see. Leah Cordwell, what's the relationship?
She is my sister.
She's your sister? And you don't know where she's at or what she's doing?
We have not heard from her.
Do you know if there's been any contact with?
No. I spoke with Judy this morning, and she informed me that Ms. Cordwell has, had not contacted her, contacted her regarding.
It may, the reason why I'm asking, it may be an academic thing that won't be, can't be enforced, but I think it, I think it should be required. That if we move to remove Ms. Cordwell, we also order her to do an account, accounting of her activities. Now, that probably won't help you, but at least that will give you a little more teeth if you're having difficulty to find, find, find the proceed, to find out exactly what took place. The other question is the, Lynn Crane, the fiduciary commissioner, recommended that an alternate personal representative be appointed to administer this estate according to the wishes of the decedent, as stated in Article 8 of her last will and testament, which lists alternate executor, son Jacob Cunningham, or daughter and petitioner Cunningham, NKA Rebecca Jones. That, do you know if Jacob has any objections to you being appointed?
He does not. He has said that he doesn't have the time to be executor, so.
Okay. So based on that representation, I believe that we should.
We do a two-step process?
Yes. I would do a motion to remove the personal representative executor and require that she submit an accounting to the new personal representative and to the clerk of the commission and within 30 days.
Okay. Also move, removing the individual and requesting the final accounting and be sent to the next person in charge. In 30 days. Yeah. Correct.
Second? I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Can I have a motion to appoint Ms. Rebecca Jones?
I move to appoint her as execu- executor? Execut- tricks. Okay. Second?
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Wish you the best of luck.
Yeah, those things are difficult.
Thank you for helping.
I wish you luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming, too. That was important.
If you have any, if you have any questions or anything about what took place, of course, you know, you can call Judy down in the county clerk's office, or you can always call our administrator, Renetta.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Take care. Okay. Okay, any other unfinished business?
No.
Any new business?
Nope.
Reports from elected officials. Ms. Blaney?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Are you a lot papers?
Well, we've got a couple of different things. I have the list of the poll workers who will be working for the upcoming election. The political parties have submitted their names, and we have subsequently filled out all the vacancies and are at the point now to entertain, where the commission can entertain a motion to appoint these poll workers to serve for the May 10th primary election. That's your pleasure today.
Also move. Second?
I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And just a clarification to help you, so I want the public, no, you were able to reduce the numbers by consolidating, which is saving the county funds. I just want to make sure.
Yes, we've got a total of 181 poll workers.
Right.
That we are placing in 41 precincts and 29 locations. So that is a reduction of the number of people that we needed to fill, the number of placements for the Democrats and Republicans. Out of that 181, there are 103 Democrats, 76 Republicans, one nonpartisan, and one independent. Of course, that's where it stands today. It's a very fluid, fluid number. It changes pretty much on a daily basis, depending on people calling in and having other obligations that might happen to come up, or sickness. But what I've handed to you is the sample ballots. We received those yesterday. The blue is the Democratic ballot, and of course, it has the nonpartisan portion at the back. The yellow is the Republican ballot, and it has the nonpartisan portion of the back. There is a separate nonpartisan ballot that just has the nonpartisan candidates and the levies on it. But since I gave you the other two, I didn't print you the third one.
And those are on, in the computer, or in the machine? That's, each one has its own?
Yes.
That's what I want to clarify, because people have asked me that.
What you are viewing there is more, is a combined. It's what we'll publish in the newspaper, because what you see on a machine is screen by screen.
That's what.
That sample ballot from those screenshots is almost 20, 30 pages long, because of all the different contests that are on the ballot. This gives a voter a much easier way to view everything in its entirety, and this is what we will place in the newspaper. This is basically what our absentee ballots look like. We went to an optical scan absentee ballot and moved away from the former manual paper ballot, so that these, the absentee ballots can be counted in the same manner that we're actually going to be counting our ballots on Election Day and at early voting. So that's what you have before you. The other paper is a calendar of dates of importance that will be coming up. Public testing will be April the 20th at our election center at the Mount Mirror Mall, the former Goodwill location. I am hopeful that, yeah, on the 20th, that since we're using the system that we're using, we may be able to test for not only early voting, but Election Day also, and eliminate the need for having two testing dates. So I put in a May 3 date there, just to hold that place setter. But if we are, in the event that we're not able to test everything for Election Day on May, on April the 20th, you have that held on your calendars there. April the 19th is the last day to register to vote. I will say one thing. I noticed in the newspaper today, there was an article about online voter registrations. We have processed almost 4,000 online voter registrations through the DMV and regular address party affiliation changes that come in online. We process very few walk-ins, and now with the online system. We encourage the walk-ins. We still have different civic groups who are doing voter registration drives and present us with original hard voter registration cards. But I've even encouraged anyone doing the voter registration drives to utilize the technology and utilize the online system. Because in order to use the online system, the person has to have a valid Department of Motor Vehicles ID already, where they have presented all of their real ID documents to the Department of Motor Vehicles. They present much greater information to get a driver's license than they would have to present to our office to get a registration. So I, I just feel that that's a much more secure way of validating a person's identity anymore than some of the methods that we have used in the past. My last thing is, I did have two employees this week who are, notified me that they are taking employment elsewhere. One was a full-time person who we had hired as an intern a couple of years ago. She came on full-time, but she's going back to Pennsylvania to be closer to her family. So in the near future, I'll be coming before you with two positions to fill. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Cecil Music, do you have anything, Mark?
Yeah. Actually, I apologize. I wasn't here early to announce. I mean, boy, we had a couple of things that came up last minute. We were trying to figure out, so.
Is this a vacancy?
No, this was the one that we did for the business personal.
Oh.
That we had.
Oh, yeah.
We talked about bringing on in March, but I waited.
Right. Right, remember.
I waited longer to do it.
Yeah, we accepted.
Yeah. Ms. Natalie Bub, who's who we have hired, and she accepted that business personal property position that we had talked about.
She's not here for that?
She's actually waiting on some taxpayers right now.
No.
All right, just wait a minute, but.
Taxpayers coming for her.
Yeah, I didn't want to pull.
Just have her when she gets a break to come by at work session today, so we can meet with, meet her.
And Natalie is, she's currently a personal property deputy with us, so she's been employed with us. But we just went ahead and offered her that position, and she accepted that. So all her information is the same.
I know Natalie. I'm sure.
Move for.
We had her in for the personal property side, too. So I mean, I can bring it down, but like I said, I didn't want to wait any longer.
Work session this afternoon.
This has to stop in. Okay.
We'd like to wel, we'd like to welcome on board.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Anything else?
Uh, no, not, not for this one, but.
Ron Snyder, Granville Administrator. What would you like to tell us?
Well, nothing new.
Nothing new?
Plugging along.
Plugging along. Do we know about where Holly Childs might be?
She said she had a 9:30 with Rocky, and then she would be in, so.
Well, she got, did she want to do it in a regular session?
She did. She did. She wanted, she said you already knew about it, but the other two didn't. Something about, are you guys doing some kind of interview tomorrow for an, or something?
I'm doing something every day, for some reason.
Are you guys working on a project that you're doing something with tomorrow?
Well, we're working on about four different projects.
Okay. She didn't specifically say. She just said she, you already knew about it, but she wanted to brief the other two on it. It'll take one to two minutes, she said.
Well.
No.
I wish you would have let me know ahead of time. Trying to decide what to do. Let's take a brief recess. Let me call her and find out exactly whether we should wait or just bring in work session. Can I have a motion to recess?
Move to recess for about five, 10 minutes. Second?
Thank you. Lauren, let's see.
Move to go back at a recess. Second?
Okay, we're, returned from recess. Holly Childs, the director, or president, I think, of the Monongate County Development Authority, will be down here in a little bit to give us some good information. In the meantime, do we have reports from county commissioners? Tom?
I just want to thank everyone for their prayers and support for our family. We lost, I lost my mother-in-law on Sunday morning, and everyone here's been great. I'm just very appreciative, and thank you very much. That's it.
Did attend the community health needs assessment. That was last week on Thursday. Also, met with Carlos Camp Muffley going over the projects that are going on there. Bobby, I'm very, very happy with the renovations and improvements that are going on. Also, Tuesday, did have a bid meeting for food services, but unfortunately, we did not have anybody show up. So we're going to have to go in some sort of direction there. And would like to announce that next week, beginning on each Wednesday for three consecutive weeks, there will be the League of Women Voters Forum for the candidates, as well as for the levies. There's three of them scheduled. There's three of them scheduled each on a Wednesday, South Middle School. So, so the public would be aware of that.
Okay, very good. I just have, have a couple of brief things. I attended the Interstate Seventy-Nine Access Study. I guess it was a forum, I guess was the name of it. It was, it's interesting. I just want to reemphasize what all the parties said. This is in the study part of it and I know a lot of people have got excited because this is on the map or that's on the map. The, the fact of matter is, is that the, this, these studies have to be completed both to be state DEP, state transportation, state human, natural resources, federal on all those type of agencies requirements. And anything that's placed in a study, or all things that are placed in the study must be considered. If you, if you go through the process of doing a study and don't consider any and all alternatives, then you could spend a year, year and a half doing a study and you decided early on to leave out an alternative or another possibility and don't complete the study. At the end of it, one of the agencies can say, you didn't study this. Reject it. Start over again. And then you got another eighteen months. So I know when these things go out and these maps go out, people get, oh, well, we can't do this, you can't do that, or no, why would you do this, or no, this is gone. In fact, all alternatives must be studied. Otherwise, you could be just throwing your taxpayers' money away, so. So that, that's an important aspect of the Interstate Seventy-Nine Access Study. I attended also the bid opening for the FedEx Road that is coming from the new FedEx site. It's tremendous site. They, they have planned that site where they can actually double that, double the size of that building. And if you've been out there, it's a huge building out there. It's just, it's just tremendous. The, the road, the first portion of the West Side Four-Lane Road, they were, they started on Monday. They're cutting, they're cutting that Four-Lane Road from the FedEx site down there and they were on the hill with big machinery cutting that new Four-Lane Road to the new interchange. So I was, I, I was asked to come out there and they said, look, look at the machines. And I said, fantastic. It's a great thing to see, those big machines. They got a machine here that could take this whole room in two bites. It's amazing. I, I might, I might, if the commission would be interested, try to set up a tour of the West Side.
I would like, yep. I think that would be really advantageous.
Because we're starting to see the, the placement of the pads and the, the roads and how, how the interconnections will be. It, it is a fantastic opportunity. So why don't I try to, maybe we'll try to set something up in May or maybe, maybe we can work it into April, but.
Maybe we can find weather hopefully be not snowing.
Be a little bit nicer. Okay. Well, I'll set, I'll set that up for everybody. Let's see, there was one other thing I wanted to mention.
With Todd May presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had, we had a, really, I wanted it to be more of a private presentation. We had received the signs from the Department of Highways that I had requested that are basically replicas of the Todd May Memorial, Michael Todd May Memorial Bridge signs that are on the bridge itself. And they, plus we, thank you, Mike Ellis. He provided, he provided the videos from the ceremonies, three videos for the ceremonies. And I was honored to present to Todd's parents and his sister-in-law for, for his brother those signs and those videos. I also presented to the sheriff for the Michael Todd May Training Room. Well, they'll be erecting the sign, the third sign I gave to the training room, the Sheriff's Department Training Room. So they'll be erecting that Michael Todd May sign. Plus, there will be a video of the naming ceremony of, of the bridge. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, that opportunity. The Department of Highways set, gave those, prepared those signs. It was all at Department of Highways expense. So I very much appreciated that. Okay. We were waiting for you, Holly.
Well, it sounds like you had a lot to talk about, so.
Just a little bit. Come on up. Yeah, come on up.
Let me bring visual aids.
Okay. Holly Childs, you got that for the record, right? Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Holly Childs.
This is exciting.
Yes, Director of the Monmouth County Development Authority and President of Morgantown Area Economic Partnership. So I wanted to come and talk with you today and address all commissioners, let you all know that I know Eldon stays pretty up to date with all the goings-on of the Development Authority and MAP just based upon him being on both of those boards with us. But I wanted to make sure that we also made the commission aware and the public aware that tomorrow, we will be putting out a request for qualifications for architectural services for a new building to be built. The Development Authority is going to be building a multi-tenant flex industrial building on the site of what we're calling the Morgantown Air Park. So as you probably know, we own thirteen acres, the Development Authority, on Hartman Run Road. That thirteen acres, which originally was going to be part of the exchange with property with the city for the ninety-five acres, we actually decided to develop that on our own, kind of as an interim industrial site. As you know, we're almost out of sites at Chaplain Hill Business Park. We just closed last week on Lot Ten with Woodford Oil. And so they, they have just started, started their plans. And so they'll be underway this season with construction for a facility there. So we only have two lots left, eleven and twelve. And those two lots together total about eleven acres. But out of the seventy-seven acres at Chaplain Hill, that's really all we have left. So we're, we're thankful for the West Side development. It can't happen fast enough to get sites out there. But also, at the same time, while we're waiting on kind of the long game, which is, as Eldon knows, the I sixty-eight Commerce Park, which is taking a long time just due to all the complexities of that project, we need to have developed industrial sites available within the county. So we're going to continue to look for additional sites. But one of the sites that's coming on strong right now is this thirteen acres at Hartman Run Road. So we're calling it Morgantown Air Park. We did have a design competition, the CEC won. CEC is in Bridgeport Engineering Firm, Civil and Environmental Consultants. They actually did the site plan for us for that thirteen acres. Out of the thirteen, just due to the topography of the county, it is, we're going to net about eight acres developable. And so we'll have an access road. We're working with the DOH now on access to Hartman Run Road, making sure that that's a viable option. You know, we certainly don't want any, any entrance that can't be okayed with the Department of Highways. But we're working on that to, to enter off, off that Hartman Run Road side. And then the site will actually be, and I can kind of show you the, the site layout. The site will actually be developed.
Bobby, can you help her hold the, maybe you can hold them off to the side so the camera can see them that way? Because we can just lean this way.
You're coming down from the mile ground, on the left of the right side.
On the Hartman Run, on the Hartman Run, well, if you're coming down, Fort Shantons on the left-hand side.
Okay.
It's, it's that, the road frontage that's down below the old Morgantown Dome.
Yeah, so it's, it's just below the landfill site.
Yeah, I know where it is.
The landfill site's up in that corner.
Yeah, this is the WVU hangar at the airport. So just to kind of give you some context, the hangar is here, Hartman Run Road is here. Our office is now, the airport office and research park is kind of over here. As you go down toward, you see the WVU hangar and there's an access road up above to that area. So off of A fifty-seven off of Hartman Run Road, they'll cut in at a five percent grade, an access road here ideally. And then this site will actually support, what we're going to, to propose is a total of three buildings. There will be five thousand square foot floor plates, so it'll be about ten thousand square feet total incubator building. So this will replace, and we've talked about before, our Morgantown Enterprise Center that we were originally looking to renovate. As you know, we, we had budgeted about one point nine million dollars for these renovations. Came in at two and a half million dollars last fall, so we decided to sell the building. So that sale is actually going through. We did get a bid and a buyer for the building. So we're, we're happy that that sale is, is moving forward. We'll have that sold within the next two months. And the proceeds from that sale will be applied then toward the building of a new incubator center. That'll be a much more modern facility for a much lower price tag. So, so this will be eight to ten thousand square feet total. And then we're actually going to have, we've, we've refined this a little bit with the designers to have some outdoor space here and a second eight to ten thousand square foot building which will be proposed for here. This is the building that we will actually see come out in paper tomorrow though, the design for this. This is a flexible industrial building. The front area will be office and the back area will be manufacturing warehouse. We're seeing a lot of demand for this product, especially in the sizes, and that kind of brings me to the second one, in the sizes that we've proposed, which are about twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet. So we're proposing, this is conceptual, but twenty to eight in this part of the building, some five thousand square foot sections and then one of about nine thousand square feet. So we're trying to maximize the site, utilize, you know, the shared parking. Our buildings will be down here, the incubator and the other small office building. But this building, we will build and then we will condo it. So we'll actually have for sale these individual pieces of the building because we're finding that there are a lot of people that are finding space for lease industrial, but would like to own space. And so, so we're just trying to offer something a little different than the market has now. And so we think this project's going to be wildly successful. We've already got three tenants interested. And we haven't even got an engineer, architect on board yet, so that's always a good sign. So the schedule is going to be that we will advertise this week and next week. We will take proposals, just on qualifications only, until the end of the month. Then in May, we will be doing the interviews and selecting an architectural firm and beginning the design process. But we hope to have this out to bid. Our construction for this and the earthwork will be out in June or July, so it'll be out this summer. So we can start, you'll see earth moving actually this season on, on the site. And then just to follow kind of that start will be this, this project out to bid.
Does the topography prohibit extending the road to the hangar area?
Yeah.
So that you have a, instead of just.
It's, it's.
It's severe on this side, right?
Two-hundred-and-fifty-foot incline.
I mean, it's sad to say, but many of the projects that end up have only one access in and one access out.
And we've actually talked about too, another access off of.
To the right.
Down the right.
Meadow.
Everlasting Lane.
Everlast, is it?
Everlasting Lane. So, so there's a, a trailer area here and so that everlasting lane. So we talked about one there, but it was about a fourteen percent grade.
Right. You can, you can see, those are, those are, those are line, contour lines. And you can see how, how close they are. If you look over here on the other side, that, that's really tight. It's sort of.
Starts getting really tight here up to the hangar.
Fit in there. But basically, the only way to extend it, extend it up to the airport, which I think would be great, would, would actually impose on FAA-controlled area. And they probably would not allow us to do it.
Right. The inside the fence.
Right.
Right.
I think it's great. Any questions?
No. Excited?
Holly, it's really good. I mean, this is, I know we started with trying to rehab old nineteen-seventy-seven. Is that when that building was built?
Eighty-six, but it feels like seventy-seven.
It feels like seventy-seven.
I'm really glad that you made this decision. It's so much better.
The, the cost was just, the cost was just astronomical to end up with a nineteen-eighty-six rehab building.
Exactly.
And, and so there, we were able to find a buyer that can, can use it for their particular purposes. But what we're trying to do is attract, everything we do is trying to attract jobs, attract investors, bring, bring people in. Well, if they're going to come to Morgantown, they want the newest, the best. They don't want, they don't want rehab stuff. They want the newest and the best. So really good work, Holly, and I really appreciate you coming down and presenting.
Yeah, thank you for showing.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah. So I'm sure you'll hear about this over the next couple of weeks as it's out in the paper and, you know, it says Mon County is hiring architectural services. We should make sure that everybody knows what's going on.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll be getting your emails to come out there and read them all.
Right, that's right. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Okay. Renata, Bobby, anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.